Good evening, everyone. I'd like to declare the meeting of Liverpool City Council for the 24th of April officially open. Just like to remind everyone that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, other than the public forum section, this meeting is being livestreamed. To start today's proceedings, I'd like to invite Father Paul Moncrief from the All Saints Catholic Church to read the prayer of council and affirmation and the acknowledgement of country. Could I please invite Father, could I invite everyone to please stand? Sorry, Father, do you mind just turning on your microphone, please? Thank you.
Our acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabral clan of the Daruk nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Daruk nations. An affirmation of our council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And our prayer before and for the meeting. The author of the biblical letter of St James writes, "You must understand this, my friends, that everyone be quick to listen, slow to anger, for your anger does not produce God's righteousness." Almighty God, we gather in a spirit of gratitude for the many gifts of our city, especially the people. May our civic leaders gathered here recognise and encourage the great efforts of so many. May they work together to enable citizens to fulfil their aspirations, develop individual family and group potential, and help contribute to the building up of our communities and city. May they support those who are struggling or new to our area by lessening anxieties wherever possible and providing new or renewed opportunities. Notwithstanding their different perspectives, may they conduct council business in a spirit of mutual respect and shared commitment to the common good. May their service be humble, relevant, generous and honest. May they inspire unity in the diversity of interests in our city by the way they manage diversity amongst themselves. May they receive encouragement for their efforts and find creative balance between public service, professional demands and personal and family needs. May their efforts enable substantial benefits for Liverpool and the South West of Sydney. And finally, in our special context, on the eve of Anzac Day, we remember all who have died in wars involving our nation, those who have been wounded or those whose health has been drastically affected. We are grateful for their sacrifice. We hope that they experience the support and healing they need and we pray for lasting peace in our world, our country, our city, our neighbourhoods and our hearts. Amen.
Thank you, Father. We'll now play the National Anthem. Can you please remain standing?
Australians, oh, let us rejoice, for we are one and free. Leave golden soil and world for toour, our home is good by sea. Our land abounds in nature's gifts of beauty, rich and rare. In history's page, let every stage advance Australia fair. In joyful strains, then let us sing, advance Australia fair. With our radiant southern cross, wheels coil with hearts and hands to make this common wealth of ours renowned to all the land. For those who come across the seas, we bound the skins to share. In hurries, let us all combine to advance Australia fair. In joyful strains, then let us sing, advance Australia fair.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. The next item, the next item is we have councillor Carnib attending remotely. Can I please have a motion that it be accepted? Move councillor Caliander, second to councillor Green. Any discussion? All those in favour? Against, declare carried. Thank you. We have no apologies. Any condolences? No condolences. The next item is the confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 27th of March 2024. Move from the deputy mayor, second to councillor Hadid. Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare carried. Are there any declarations of interest?
Mr Mayor, I have an urgency motion.
Yes, councillor, what's your urgency motion?
My urgency motion, Mr Mayor, is in relation to the past 24 hours and the immense media regarding the state of Liverpool council. You know, the various reports, reports in the Sydney Morning Herald and on 2GB.
So wait, councillor, can I just confirm? I guess, why is it urgent?
It's urgent because this matter has to be put to bed and we have to get on to doing what we need to do to govern Liverpool.
I'm happy to accept that as an urgency motion. Please, go ahead.
Okay, Mr Mayor. I think it's appropriate that we formally acknowledge...
Sorry, point of order. Does the motion need a second to continue?
I'll read out the motion.
It does once the motion is read out. So she hasn't read out the motion, so urgency has been accepted. Now we need the motion to be read.
It's appropriate that we're here at this stage formally acknowledge and congratulate both the CEO and his team, the mayor and his councillors, and commit to continue on this path of positivity, collaboration and working for the best of Liverpool. I move that council, one, notes the comments of the Ray Hadley, Stephen Donnelly, A O Charisma, Caliander MP and the councillor Betty Green and councillors Peter Hall in support of the Liverpool council. Write to the Office of Local Government, the Premier, the Ministers of Local Government, the Member for Leppington and the Member for Liverpool, making them aware of this situation, formally acknowledging the role of the CEO, his team and council and in achieving this position of collaboration and positivity. Endeavour to continue, number three, endeavour to continue of this path of continued improvement and for all the constituents of Liverpool. Write to the Member of Leppington, asking him to retract his comments about the grave concerns he has with the management of Liverpool City Council under our very good and much appreciated CEO, John Ojaka. I put the motion to the council.
Do you have a second or free a motion? Second to councillor Goodman. Any discussion?
Mr Mayor, Liverpool council has far more important things to do. Liverpool council has a great many decisions to make. Liverpool council needs to offer a service that the constituents can be proud of. We need to work together as a team. We need to satisfy what the constituent expect from a council. And I don't think there's one amongst us who would expect this sort of behaviour from any council. I implore all councillors to support this motion.
Any other speakers for or against?
I have some questions in regards to the motion.
Yes, councillor.
So I acknowledge councillor Rhodes wanting to put this matter to bed, but I'm wondering how this motion actually does that, considering there seems to be some incredibly salient and very structural issues happening within the leadership of council. How does this motion put this issue to bed?
Is there a question to...
Through the chair to councillor Rhodes or the second to whoever would like to answer it?
Yes, Mr Mayor, very, very happy to answer the question for councillor Caliander. The way that we put this together by making a firm commitment from all councillors here to work together, to collaborate for the best interest of Liverpool. There is a great many things that this council needs to do and we can achieve it and we can achieve it together. Let's not, let's not be brought down by the matters that have become such of importance in the community. Let's stop it now. Let's all work together. I ask all councillors to support this motion.
Yep, councillor Green.
In reply, I think I've had a very strong record. My record speaks for itself in terms of attempts to work collaboratively with all councillors. I certainly do work collaboratively with all staff.
Sorry, councillor, are you speaking for or against the motion?
Well, I'm feeling against the motion because I really, to be honest, I'm finding it all a little weird. Because, I mean, if there was a problem that needed to be sorted, then I would have thought that as the collaborative team that councillor Rhodes is requesting, that we would have, those councillors that are not privy to information, someone would have picked up the phone and said, there's an issue, there's a problem. Let's get together and talk about this and sort it all through. Now, that didn't happen. So, you know, when you've got people that, you know, you have no idea what's going on, to then boil it down to a lack of collaboration on the part of the people who don't, who had no idea what was going on, is, I think, very, very bizarre.
Councillor, can I ask, did you reach out to any councillors and ask them?
Was it my responsibility if there was the issue that was...
Sorry, can you put your microphone on, please?
If there was an issue that was going on, that councillors, other councillors, that councillors may have been discussing amongst themselves, to not have included all councillors, is it my responsibility to reach out and say, look, you know, is there anything going on? If somebody had an issue, if I've had an issue, I might ring councillor Hall and discuss it. So, I mean, I don't understand what the spirit of this motion is. I don't understand why it's here when apparently there are so many other issues that we need to get through today.
Yes, sorry, yes, councillor.
Thank you very much, councillor, and I appreciate your concerns. This is the land, the line that's been drawn in the sand. This is the reach out to all councillors to start to work collaboratively together. This is the reaching out, councillor. It's the reaching out and this is why I want all councillors to stand behind this motion collaboratively. If it doesn't happen after this, then I don't know what we will do. But we must try.
Yes, so I go back to my previous question. I appreciate what councillor Rhodes is saying in terms of, you know, writing to a whole range of people, noting comments, et cetera. But there has been a lot of discussion around job losses, around changes of leadership within the organisation. This motion does not address any of those things. It doesn't express what position council is recommended to take on those issues that are of, you know, great concern to residents, to staff, and that have been the subject of much discussion over the last 24 hours. So I ask again, what position is this asking council to take? And how does this put the matters that have been of public interest in the last 24 hours to bed?
Thank you. Sorry, can I ask that at least whilst these screens aren't working, can I ask that that be at least be expanded, please, so we can read it? Can everyone in the gallery see the motion on those screens? Are they off as well? They're on, you can read them? Thanks. Can we just make, increase the font size in the bottom there? All right, beautiful. Is that the whole thing? I think it's, can you just move over a little bit? Because it looks like, I think, we're just cutting off a few words. Beautiful, thank you. I think it's a Steve Donnelly, OAM. And they got the, Mr Donnelly, is your name spelt correctly? I think it's a bit mistaken. So if we go through it, I think we're, if we're going through this, talking about the comments that were made by Ray Hadley, Steve Donnelly. So if we go, I know Ray Hadley made comments yesterday favourable regarding the CEO, Mr Ojaka. And council, was that, what? And then Mr Donnelly also made similar comments. Are they the ones that you're referring to? I'm assuming that's the one. And then there was a story in the Herald today from councillor Green, councillor Caliander, councillor Hall. So I guess number one is that, I guess, do you stand by those comments that you guys made in the paper and in those other comments? Yes?
That's not the substance of my question. Like I said, those comments, those discussions in the media have discussed a range of issues, including a large number of job losses amongst, within the organisation, you know, potential changes of leadership within the organisation. What does this motion actually put on the table in terms of what position council is going to take on those things? Because I think that is of interest to all of us right now.
Councillor Hadid? Can I ask everyone to turn off the mics, please? Thank you, you're on.
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I don't believe this notice of motion can solve the issue we have. We have a fairly big issue, it seems to me. There is some sort of trust, some sort of allegation that's rising. So unless we have this issue properly investigated by a proper, relevant authority, we won't get anywhere. We won't get anywhere. So we need a proper and relevant authority to go through it and investigate the whole issue inside and outside without any influence from anyone. That's how we can solve the issue. That's it, that's what I want to say, no more.
That in the motion, that we have a point five, that council calls for a independent investigation into the matters raised by the public and in the public media and by some councillors?
Well, I'd like to present that as a foreshadowed motion.
Well, so one sec, can we... Can you put your microphone on, off?
I concur with councillor Hadid that the real issue is about a thorough and independent investigation. And that is the motion that I would support. I would move that as a foreshadowed motion or you're putting it as a motion?
So can I just clarify?
I said, it has to be a proper investigation by a relevant authority, independent or not, this is one. And second, it was out to the influence of anyone, nor the CEO, directors, staff, the mayor, councillors. I don't want anyone to get involved in it. All out of it, of it, and let's investigate it probably. You know, to get to the bottom of that.
So can we now, let's just clarify this, all right? Because there's two elements there. So I think you're councillor Caliander, you're referring to the comments in the media about 150 job losses, right, and other senior officers' positions, right? That's what you're, that's, I think both of you are referring to that as unresolved issues, okay, right? Sorry, I'm just trying to break this down into the increments so we can deal with it because it's multifaceted. I think what, basically, if I can read into this, what councillor Rhodes is saying is that there were a lot of positive things said regarding Liverpool council, right, through Mr Donnelly's interview on 2GB yesterday, through Ray Hadley, right, through yourselves in the Herald today, yourself, councillor Green, councillor Hall. So the question is, number one, do you stand by those comments, right? And I think this is saying, let's reiterate what councillor Rhodes is saying, let's reiterate those positive comments and saying that do we as a council support those? Am I correct in councillor Rhodes saying that's your intention of the first part of that motion?
That's exactly the intention. I think we need the points one, two, three and four. And I'm happy to have point five put into this motion.
Councillor, sorry if I can interrupt you. Can we just leave just point five for a moment and just go through what's there before we start adding on to it, right? So point two...
Can I just say that that's a very cherry-picked version of the range of comments that have been made in the last 24 hours?
If you can just bear with me, councillor, I'll get to it.
One second. And to sort of pick up on councillor Green's point, this is a very bizarre, parallel universe kind of motion in terms of how this puts to bed what has been happening over the last 24 hours.
Well, okay, thanks.
Councillor Caliander, can I just ask you, do you agree with that first statement? Because we've got to, either agree or disagree with it.
Like I said, there were a range of comments that were made. Which ones are you referring to?
Okay, we've been specific. Would you be happy if we say Dr Betty Green and councillor Peter Hall and any other comments?
I think, sorry, excuse me, everyone. Excuse me, one sec, councillor Hadid. You're talking about the positive comments. Okay, great. Now, if you want to deal with the negative comments, that is another point. But councillor Rhodes is trying to put a motion that clarifies that there's positive things that are being said about Liverpool council, right? If you then read it in context with the next item in there, that there was a speech done under parliamentary privilege by former councillor Nathan Haggerty, right, regarding the senior staff of Liverpool City Council. And I'm assuming, I can read it now, sorry. Right? So it's about notifying Mr Haggerty, because those comments, they were done under parliamentary privilege and they were, they were not favourable of Liverpool council and the senior officers of Liverpool council. And I think point three is to say endeavour to continue on this positive path, continue improvement, yep, there's more to do, get that. And number four is writing to the Member for Leppington and asking him to retract those comments which were quite negative, which do, I guess, are at odds with the positive comments that were said by yourselves and by Mr Donnelly yesterday through the media. That's how I see that. If you don't want to add other parts of that and get clarification, then that's another part. But I think dealing with the motion of what's there is what's there.
Well, Mr Mayor, to be honest with you, I'm not here to discuss what Mr Hadley or Mr Donnelly or Dr Green or my colleague Caliander or Peter Hall said. Everyone is entitled for his own view. He has views, he has to express his views. He can say whatever he likes. What I'm asking now, just to go through a proper investigation. Maybe what they said is true, let's find out. Maybe they said it's, you know, not true and misled by some people. Let's see what is the fact. I'm not here to discuss what Ray said, Mr Donnelly said, or Mr X, Mr Z said. I'm not here to discuss that. Someone praised Liverpool City Council what we're doing and the other said, no, you're not doing a very good job. You have to do something else. There is 150 job cut. Where the fact come from? I've never heard about 150 bloody jobs cut from Liverpool City Council. Who said that? I've never heard that. I've never seen that. I've never discussed that. I've never voted on that. Let's get the fact straight and right. And the only way to find out what's going on is through a proper investigation with a relevant investigator. That's it.
Yeah, that's what it is.
He said, she said, who said?
So if it's, I can say this, I have never heard, right, and I'll say this to the staff who are here today, I have never heard in any conversation through myself, the CEO, managers, any councillor, talk about 150 job losses. That's over 15% of our organisation. That's impossible, unlikely. Sorry, excuse me. I expect to perform in the chambers, not to you, sorry, for the crowd. Not one single person has even mentioned that. The reality is, if you look at the draft budget documents, our workforce is actually going to grow, right? That's the reality, and that's still in draft. The budget will be presented in a few weeks' time and there will be more jobs today, there'll be more jobs tomorrow in that budget than what there is today. So I think you need to go back and find out where did that number come from? I'm happy to say, and I'll always believe in this, any day of the week. Sorry, Helen, do you want a chair? Helen? Would you like a chair?
Yeah, give a chair, give a chair. You can't take my chair. I'm gonna have my chair.
Please. Sorry. She actually comes to every single council meeting, so she's a... Thank you for being a gentleman and allowing us... No worries, thank you. I always, and I'm not shy about this, always say that we always need to look at our management costs and have more people on the front line out there delivering services to our community. If you look at the first budget we did, we increased, I think it was 20 positions roughly in the outdoor, 18 positions, I think it was, in the outdoor depot. We increased, we had more planners put on. We did that in our first budget. So, I don't know, we've all been in budget discussions, right? So if we're gonna, if we're gonna have to respond to hearsay all the time, right? But I can tell you now, whoever's told you 150, ask them to demonstrate to you the proof. I'm happy to show you all the different documents. If anything, maybe then to alleviate that, right, as an extra point to the motion, maybe you add on to it, asking the CEO to provide, to send an all-staff email informing them of where we're looking at, what we're looking at now with regards to headcount with our budget. I think that's a good factual, right? Sorry, just one moment. Councillor Rhodes, what do you think about that? Would that... Do you want to put your microphone on, please? Councillor Hadid, can you please turn your microphone off? Councillor Hadid? Thank you.
Absolutely, Mr Mayor. I think that would satisfy a lot of people's angst around stuff which is just being reported that isn't true.
Yep.
So can I just ask a question? With point six that you've just included, that suggests that there will be amendments to the headcount. Is that...
An increase.
An increase, right.
An increase. Liverpool's grown by over 17, 1800 dwellings, right? How are we expected to go out there and to cut more grass and do more work, right, if you don't have more people out there?
Absolutely.
We don't, we don't, we don't take that extra rate money and then put on more managers. We put more people out there and high vis vest doing the job like we did in our first budget, right? And we need to, we need to continue to grow that team. So if everyone remembers that, so yes.
So I'm glad that there's, that increase has been specified. But my point is, there's obviously been some way that, you know, this figure of 150 job losses and a whole range of other information has come out. And that's why I absolutely agree with councillor Hadid in that an investigation is required. And so I support councillor Green's... in that an investigation is required. And so I support councillor Green's motion for a independent investigator, for us to write to the minister to request an investigation into...
Sorry, all due respect, if we're gonna go on social media and what is said in social media, are we gonna treat every, every rumour in the same fashion?
Well, is every rumour going to have this level of impact? Because if it isn't, then an investigation is required.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor?
I would suggest that it probably will if there are rumours that are going to get out like this, that aren't substantiated. I could suggest that it probably will have just as many people unnecessarily affected by rumour.
Yeah. And if we want to talk about rumours, so I saw today on a Facebook page, insinuation that, that when I received, what do they call it, when my, the vehicle that I drive provided from council, a fine was received in it, that I have allocated to someone else, right, inappropriately, right? So now I'll respond, if you want an investigation to it, fantastic. That was taken on Hoxbury Road as my wife was driving my son to Westmead Hospital, right, while I was getting her, getting regio on her car. So, I'm just, no, because you're asking about investigations and rumours, right? Right? Because you asked if I would, do you want... Sorry, can you please turn your microphone on please?
So before we get sidetracked into other rumours and other issues that you would like to include in here, can we stick to the issue at hand and what is on the table?
Yep. So the question is, how do we, the question is, how do we deal with rumours online, right? How do we deal with rumours about whether it's about myself personally, or it's about 150 job losses, whether it's about, I don't know, whatever, whatever else is under the sun, right? We're gonna be consistent, right?
It's not about 150, someone said 150. It's not about that. It's about more than that. It's deeper than that. I'm not worried about someone said, well, you're gonna lose 150 jobs. I'm not worried about that. What does worry me, something's greater than, something else. Something else is happening. I've been raising issue for years about it. And nobody wants to listen. Nobody wants to hear me. I keep selling, let's invest in the outdoor. Give them more jobs, give them more money. Don't spend money on the administration base, on high level directors, high level managers. Give the money to the outwork. Give them the money. I've been saying that for a long time. It's just about time to go and investigate.
Councillor Hadeed, one can I... Councillor Hadeed, can I ask you, want to turn on your microphone? Councillor Hadeed, can I please ask you to turn on your microphone next time? But you did a good job of making sure that it was heard without the microphone. But, yeah, exactly. And on to that, I just probably should, we should point out that I think it was this council, unfortunately not unanimous, that voted to buy 600 Cow Pasture Road to improve the conditions, the working conditions of our employees, right, which I think is a much better improvement on Rose Street. So people who want to divide, right, we either get divided or we work united. And that's what councillor Rhodes's motion is all about. It's about working together and not doing that. Can I recommend that next time, something like that, you know, members of the union, if they have concerns regarding discussions of the budget, to contact myself, contact the councillors, right, to clarify, ask the question. I did not receive any questions. And I'm, my apologies if I did, if I did and I missed them. I received no comments about that. I received no questions about that whatsoever, right? So it's crystal clear, the documents are there. Yeah.
Mr Mayor, I say again, this is the line drawn in the sand. This is the opportunity for us to move forward. The investigation should uncover anything that you are concerned about, councillor Hadeed. Let's move forward. Let's move forward together and agree. Then we will, then we will vote on this motion.
Thank you, thank you. Relax, relax, so it's, relax councillor Hadeed. And what do they call it? And I think the, the other point, well, I can't comment, I can't comment directly, but I would be, I would be surprised, once again, if you look at the, what else was said in the media, I would be surprised if anybody lost their job tonight. That would become, that would become as a shock to me. So interpret that as you will. Right? So anyway, the motion, there's a motion to be put. I'll put the motion. But sorry, I don't believe that the Minister of Local Government should be, should be investigating, he's very busy, investigating rumours. Huh? Office of Local Government, right? Yeah, great. Office of Local Government. Sorry. All right. Is the secondar happy with, is the secondar happy with that? Great. Okay, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. So I should ask you, would you like a reply councillor Rhodes? If you put your microphone, sorry everyone.
Mr Mayor, I am employing upon everybody to support this motion. If you do not support this motion, then you are not enabling us to move forward, to improve, to stop this stupidity and start to do things for the benefit of our constituents. I ask you, please, I ask you, please, this stupidity, it is, things are being reported that aren't true. It's ridiculous. Let's draw a line under it, all work together. Let's get all the information. Great. Then you're in support of this motion councillor. I employ every councillor to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, you put the point. All right. I'll call for a division. All those in favour, please stand. Thank you. All those against? Councillor Khanib, sorry, are you voting for or favour councillor Khanib?
Now.
Pardon, for or against?
I vote for.
Oh, councillor Khanib votes for. Thank you. I declare the motion carried. We now have two mayoral minutes which I'd like to put forward to council. The first one is regarding the Wakely church attack. In light of the attack on the Christ Good Shepherd Church in Wakely, it is with profound sadness that address our community. The stabbing of Bishop Marmari Emmanuel and the parish priest, Father Daniel Kochu, is an abhorrent act of violence that has shaken our soul. Such acts of hatred have no place in our society and must be unequivocally condemned. I extend my deepest sympathies and prayers to Bishop Emmanuel, Father Kochu, their families, the parish and the Assyrian community during this difficult time. Can I ask those of when they leave the chamber to please leave quietly? I wish that Bishop Emmanuel and Father Daniel Kochu a swift and full recovery from their injuries. It is heartening to witness the astute leadership from our community leaders in the aftermath of this tragedy. I would like to acknowledge the efforts of Premier Chris Minns, Mayor Frank Carbone, David Saliba MP and Daili MP for the exemplary leadership during this challenging time. Their dedication to ensuring the safety and wellbeing of the community is truly commendable. I would also like to acknowledge the collective efforts of the Christian and Islamic leaders in condemning the incident and calling for peace. Interfaith, dialogue and cooperation are more vital now than ever before. By engaging in open and respectful conversations, we can bridge divides, dispel misconceptions and promote harmony within our community. In the face of such adversity, it is an imperative that we stand together in solidarity, rejecting division and embracing unity. We have a responsibility to foster an environment of peace, respect and understanding among all. As we condemn this senseless act of violence, let us reaffirm our commitment to building a society where all individuals can worship freely and live without fear of persecution. Together, we can strive towards a future where compassion prevails over violence. Let us continue to work tirelessly to create a more peaceful and inclusive community for all. And I recommend that council condemns the terrorist attack of the Christ Good Shepherd Church in Wakely, which resulted in the stabbing of Bishop Marmari Emmanuel and the parish priest, Father Daniel Kochu. Two, extend its deepest sympathies to Bishop Emmanuel, Father Kochu, their families, the parish and the Assyrian community. Three, acknowledges and commends the astute leadership demonstrated by the Premier Chris Minns, Mayor Frank Carbone, David Saliba MP and Daili MP in response to this tragedy. Four, recognise the collective efforts of Christian and Islamic leaders in condemning the incident and advocating for peace and emphasises the importance of interfaith dialogue and cooperation in building bridges, dispelling misconceptions and promoting harmony within our community. Is there any discussion? Councillor Green?
I don't have a problem with the mayoral minute as it stands, but I'm just wondering as a council, was an invite, open invite sent to all councillors? And if not, why not?
What are you referring to, sorry?
With the, the interfaith meeting. So if it was held in, I understand it was held in council chambers. So as a, I guess, collaboration and a united front, I'm just wondering why it was an open invitation made to all councillors? And if not, why not?
Okay, I'll look, I'm happy to answer that. So I have meetings all day, every day. I was requested on Tuesday night by the Assyrian community to organise a meeting with leaders from the Islamic community and the Assyrian community. Like I have meetings in my office, I had a meeting, we had a very good turnout to come to that. And there was a very specific objective that the community requested take place. And there was, there were, the invitation list was, I guess, how can you put this? We invited the deputy leader of the government, the deputy leader of the opposition, we invited Miss Tina Ayad, being a, one of the only Muslim members of parliament, and Mr David Saliba, being one of the only Assyrian Muslim, Christian Muslim members of parliament. And that was the extent of it, and leaders. So it was meant, it was a very good discussion that took place, not political in any sense. And it was a, a meeting like any other meeting that I would have in my office, you know? And if you would like to organise a similar such meeting, then I strongly recommend you do. Because one of the outcomes of that was that we need to over communicate. We need to communicate as much as possible, as frequently as possible, in person, online, in any way. You know, we invited, the invitation was first to, whether Mayor Frank Carbone would like to actually host that meeting. He refused, he was unavailable to it and he recommended that I do it instead.
I understand. I'm a great believer in open dialogue and discussion, but I still cannot understand why an open invitation was not made to all councillors. We have the member for Liverpool, but I don't know, did you get it invited? So I guess, you know, if we're talking, we've just passed a motion on collaboration and cooperation. And given it such as affects our community, and by the way, do work with a lot of multicultural communities, I would have thought that it would have been a moment of pride, if not for council and all councillors to have been invited to that. And I'm, I'm sorry, but I can't accept, well, you know, I mean, we've received invites to things the day before, the day of. So...
So councillor, if I can say that, this is...
Well, I want to register my, my deep disappointment that as a member of the community and has worked in the community for a long time with women from all different cultures and religions, I'm deeply disappointed that the invitation was not extended to all councillors.
Sorry, councillor Green, that was a meeting between myself, I have meetings all day, every day with different interfaith leaders. I've had a rabbi come here, I've had priests come here, I've had numerous religious leaders come here. If you would like, if you want to organise a meeting with them, right, this is not what the subject of this motion is, right? I'm not, I'm under no obligation to invite every councillor to a meeting that I have with different community leaders. Right? So that's a, that's a completely different kettle of fish, right? If you want to bring that up, happy to. But like I said, I have meetings, I have meetings, many on Friday, many on Monday, many different religious leaders, sometimes three turn up, sometimes five, sometimes 10, sometimes 20. So it's not an organised function of council.
Well, all of a Mr Mayor, the point's taken, you know, from my colleague councillor Green. I can understand it was very short notice, but would you please, next time, just make sure, even on very short notice, give him call, everyone, say, well, look, we have any blah, 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 if you'd like to attend. End of the story. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you. Councillor Kallien?
I note that the, you know, that part of this motion acknowledges the leadership of a number of representatives within both our region and more broadly. And one of the hallmarks of that leadership was that there was no, you know, that there was no division in terms of how there was outreach done with the community. And I think an application of that similar level of leadership within our community would have been best reflected had you opened up that invitation to all councillors, to show those members of the community who turned up, who were, you know, afraid, who experienced all range of different emotions over the last week. It was a horrific event. To show those members of the community who turned up, that we are all with them as well. I would have thought that it was, would be an appropriate reflection of leadership to show that their councillors, their representatives are also on side with them and also appreciative of the terrible experiences that they've suffered and their fears more broadly within the community. So I, you know, I hear what you're saying in terms of it was a meeting in your office or whatever it was, but I would have thought that that would have been a more effective and a more appropriate reflection of leadership within this community. And it's really disappointing that that wasn't done.
This is a very serious matter. I'll refrain from commenting on that. And it's the first time that anyone has raised an issue with this with me. But I will, and it's actually not the subject of this mayoral minute. So if you'd like to discuss it, happy to take it online, happy to have it dealt as a motion. But I know, I don't want to say anything because anything I say will take away from the seriousness of what this motion actually is. Is there any discussion regarding the motion or the comment that happened? I'll put those, all those in favour. Against, declared unanimous. The next item is regarding the Bondi tragedy, junction tragedy. I stand before you with a heavy heart as we come together to address another tragedy that has deeply affected our community. On the 13th of April 2024, a horrifying incident unfolded at Bondi Junction Westfield, where six precious lives were lost and 12 individuals were hospitalized due to a senseless mass stabbing attack. Our thoughts and prayers are with the victims, their families and friends who are grappling with the unimaginable grief. We extend our deepest condolences to the wider community of Bondi and Waverley. In the face of adversity, it is crucial to acknowledge the unwavering courage displayed by our community members and first responders who bravely confronted danger amidst chaos. Their selfless acts of heroism exemplify the strength of our community in times of crisis. We also express gratitude to those who continue to support the ongoing investigation, victims and mental health services and recovery efforts demonstrating compassion and solidarity during this challenging period. I want to highlight the heartfelt letter of condolence sent by our mayor to to Mayor, councillor Polomosalos, the mayor of Waverley, offering our sympathies to the affected communities of Bondi and Waverley. I join the delegation, so I think it's supposed to be the mayor of Parramatta, my apology, to the mayor of Polomosalos, offering our sympathies to the affected communities of Bondi and Waverley. I join the delegation of Western City mayors to lay wreaths at the Oxford Street Mall on the 70th of April 2024, paying tribute to the victims and honouring the courageous actions of bystanders and first responders. As we navigate through this time of profound sadness, let us come together in unity and strength. In honour of the lives lost and solidarity with those affected, I propose that we absorb another moment of silence to pay our respects to the victims of this unfathomable tragedy. And I'd like to move that council acknowledges the tragic incident that occurred at the Bondi Westfield on April 13th and extend our deepest condolences to the victims, their families and friends, as well as the wider community of Bondi and Waverley. Two, recognising and commends the unwavering courage displayed by community members and first responders during this crisis. Three, expresses gratitude to those supporting ongoing investigations, victim and mental health services and recovery efforts. Four, proposes observing a moment of, a moment of silence to pay respects to the victims of this tragic event. Is there any discussion?
Could there be another point to that? Could there be another point to that, that, um, in terms of like an official writing to the mayor of, of particular area to say, to extend our, our deep, sincere condolences and, um... And we should, you know, for speeding and stop, you know, standing with them at a time of, of, um, of such tragedy and grief.
Yeah, so we, um, thank you, Counsel Green, we, we, um, the intention is to, uh, to meet with the mayor and hand over the condolence book, uh, that was organised and we will, um, um, and we can add a point five that says, you know, write to the mayor of Waverley on behalf of our community, um, notifying them of this mayoral minute and the sympathies expressed within it. Minute, 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 minute. It's a, a minute, minute of silence, please, if we can just amend that. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Could I please invite everyone to please stand for a minute of silence? Thank you, everyone, please be seated. The next mayoral minute is regarding farewell and thanks to Professor, Professor Barney Glover AO. I rise today to extend our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Professor Barney Glover AO, Vice Chancellor and President of Western Sydney University. As he concludes his tenure and embarks on a new chapter of his distinguished career, Professor Glover has been a stalwart partner in our city's journey towards academic excellence. His leadership at Western Sydney University has been marked by unwavering dedication to student success, impactful research and the prosperity of our communities, both within South Western Sydney, Sydney and beyond. One of Professor Glover's enduring legacies in our city is the establishment of Liverpool's first city campus, a milestone that has played a pivotal area, a pivotal role in elevating Liverpool as a true university city. This initiative not only expanded our educational opportunities for our residents, but has also fostered a culture of learning and innovation within our community. I would, I would be remiss not to acknowledge Professor Glover's invaluable contributions to the Committee for Liverpool, particularly during its inaugural days. His insights, guidance and unwavering support have been instrumental in shaping the committee's vision and strategic direction. I also extend my gratitude to Professor Pollock for her interim leadership during this transition period and I'm confident that under her stewardship, Western Sydney University will continue to thrive and uphold its commitment to excellence. In reflecting on Professor Glover's distinguished career, it is impossible to overlook his numerous accolades, including his appointment as an officer of the Order of Australia, AO, for his distinguished service to tertiary education. As Professor Glover embarks on new endeavors, I wish him all the best in his future. His legacy will continue to inspire generations of scholars, educators and community leaders for years to come. Thank you, Professor Glover, for your unwavering dedication, visionary leadership, profound impact on Western Sydney University and our city as a whole. And I'd like to move that council formally recognises and thanks Professor Barney Glover for his outstanding service and contributions to Western Sydney University and the city of Liverpool. Two, extends its best wishes to Professor Glover as he embarks on a new chapter of his career. We express our gratitude for his unwavering dedication, exemplary leadership and profound impact on higher education and community development. Three, holds a suitable civic event to thank Professor Glover and celebrate our partnerships with WSU. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Thank you. Councillors, I'd like to, I have one further mayoral minute. Um, and in accordance with section 10A2A and section 10D of the Law Government Act 1993, the meeting is to move into closed session on the grounds that the matter relates to personal matters concerning particular individuals other than councillors. I'd like to put the motion, all those in favour?
Are we moving into closed session now?
Yes.
What about the rest of the...
We'll get to that, we'll get to that afterwards. It's, it will be, it will be discussed in the, in closed session. All right? 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 Seconded Deputy Mayor, right? All those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare it carried. Can I please ask? Yeah, it's fine, all those in favour, going into closed session. Whilst, uh, council was in closed session, the following was reserved, was, um, was resolved, um, that council, one, exercise clause 9.8, special leave of the CEO's employment agreement and grant leave without pay until the matters raised in the mayoral minute are considered independently. A, appoint Mr Jason Braden, Director of Operations, acting chief executive matter until the matter is concluded. Two, investigate Liverpool City Council workplace health and safety concerns that are advised to be impacting organisational, organisational culture, including, A, issues raised and feedback provided by USU representatives with the mayor and other councils on Tuesday the 23rd of April 2024 regarding safe and acceptable and appropriate workplace culture. B, offensive chants made by attendees participating in the public gathering on Wednesday 24th of April 2024 that included council employees in the civic place public domain specifically chanting racist religious comments. C, report back to council this matter. Three, notify the Office of Government regarding this matter. On being put, the motion was carried. All right. Now, uh, that being said, we've had, we will now take a recess till 6pm and we'll resume the agenda then. Thank you. Seconded Councillor Green, is there any discussion? No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. I need a planning matter, please, I need everyone's hands up or down. Unanimous? Counsel Carnie, yep, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next item, if you, if you please have it noted as unanimous, please. Um, Plan 02, uh, S3.22, expediate amendment for Middleton Grange Local Centre, page 57, tab two with the...
Happy to move it.
Moved, Councillor Harle, seconded Councillor Green, is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please, it's a planning matter, I need hands. Against, I declare, oh, he's in front of me, sorry, I declare it carried, so, Counsel Carnie. All right. Next item is Plan 03, draft compliance and enforcement policy, page 65, tab 3 with a recommendation on page 65.
Happy to move this motion after a couple of questions on it.
Uh, yep, so you moved the motion?
Yep.
Do we have a seconder, seconded Deputy Mayor? Counsel Rhodes?
Yeah, uh, the first question is, has the amended policy internal administrative changes been costed and are they in the budget?
I'll refer to the acting CEO.
Probably a two-part question is, is it? Uh, so I'll refer the first part of the question to the acting director of planning and compliance and then the second part, whether it's included in the budget, to the director of corporate services.
Uh, through, through, through the chair, I'll defer the question through to the manager of community standards.
Uh, through the chair, I can advise that there are no financial implications, um, so there is no impact on the budget.
In the...
Counsel Rhodes?
In the report, it says that, um, there will be considerable, or not considerable, there will be, uh, internal administrative changes with the presentation of new letters. I don't know what sort of information is going to be contained and, uh, that, uh, so there are costs involved according to the, to the, uh, to the report. And the question is simply, if there is cost involved, will they, have they been costed and are they in the budget?
So again, through the chair, um, those costs would be absorbed by the existing internal administration offices, so no additional costs.
There's no additional costs. Um, just a moment and I'll find it. Well, I'll, I'll take it as, uh, being informed, okay, because I can't find it and if I do find it, I'll send it through as a, as a question to the directors in turn. I certainly don't want to take up any more time than what is necessary, uh, uh, to get through the rest of the, um, of the agenda. Yeah, take one for the team.
If there's no further questions, discussion?
Uh, just, just another question.
Almost, almost.
The policy refers, and I won't take up too much of council's time once again, because I have given this to the, uh, council request team. And, uh, council keeps on referring to, uh, discretion within the policy. And, uh, this council has had a great deal of difficulty with there being discretion by the council and, uh, the consistency with it. And if the conditions regarding the discretion are written into the policy, should it not be that we refer as per the policy rather than keep on referring, oh, well, we might show discretion in this? Um, and the examples that I have got are contained in the, in a letter that I've given to councillor request and I'm happy for all of that to go to the department concerned so that they can answer it and, uh, and, and report back on it when this comes back from being on exhibition to the community.
Thank you, counsel.
I will now put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is Plan 04, post-door knocking report renaming street sections of Middleton Grange, uh, page 87, tab four with a recommendation on page 87.
Happy to second.
Moved, Councillor Green, uh, seconded Councillor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare that unanimous. Next item is Plan 05, Durant's draft principal planning proposal to establish a new Liverpool Law and Environmental Plan, page 123, tab 5 with a recommendation on page 125.
Happy to move.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to defer this, I'm sorry, but I just need one more month. Can I defer it? Because I have questions to ask that I haven't asked yet. Um, so it's been, it's a very, I'm sorry that you're frustrated, Councillor Green, but it is a very detailed, long report, as you know, um, and I do not want to leave one stone unturned when we look at that report.
Yeah, I'm hap, I'm happy to, uh, to second that. Uh, can I, can I ask that we, um, organise, um, one, if not two, workshops before the next council meeting, if I can, through the, through the CEO, if that's all right? Um, I think that'd be good. And I think then we can, then we thank the staff for all their wonderful work and effort in doing so. Yeah. Um, all right. I'll, uh, put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Deferral. Right? Against, declare it, uh, carried, can I just have that recorded? Um, let's open up the voting. Do you want to open up the voting? We have to, it's planning. But as I said, we'll just do it on the screen. I will refer to the manager and see what her preference is. Standing or, um, buttons? Let's call the buttons. Sure, they have to call the vote first. Um, defer, to defer, this is for deferral. 26 voters now? Oh, I didn't do that. Cool. All right, I declare the motion, and we got current, Counsel Carnie's vote? No? So I think this, if we can end the voting and we'll ask him what he's, if he's for or against, which we call it manually if we can.
Counsel Carnie had some technical issues at home as well, so his sound wasn't coming through.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, well, um, we'll have to move on. Thank you, I declare the motion for deferral carried. Plan 06, investigation on the use of transport for New South Wales mobile speed cameras.
Happy to move.
Move, Councillor Harle, seconded Councillor Amun, any discussion? Uh, sorry, my apologies, page 141, tab 6, page 142, the recommendation, my apologies. Any discussion? Um, I'll, I'll, I'll take this opportunity, I, um, we know the significant challenges that we've had in our community in recent times, um, and just want to, uh, congratulate and thank Counsel Calienda for her work and effort in, uh, in lobbying and getting the petition going to the state parliament, um, on its, what is very important. Um, and we hope that you can, um, help further with this, um, as well. Thank you, now I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Next item is Plan 07.
Um... Happy to move.
Can you take off for a second? I'll have to deal with something. I'll be back.
Oh, that's a big step after a long day. Sorry, oh God, moving everything when I get up here. Sorry, everyone, so we're up to Plan 07, um, page 176 with a recommendation on page 178. Do I have a mover? Councillor Harle, seconded. Councillor Hadid, all those in favour? It's a planning, so we need, it's unanimous, uh, declare it carried, thank you. The next item is Plan 08, um, exhibition, re-exhibition of the draft VPA on page 193 with a recommendation on page 194, tab 8. Anybody move?
Move that way.
Councillor Harle, seconded Councillor Rhodes, any discussion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it unanimous, thank you. Okay. Sorry. Um... Okay. Okay. Um, if we move on to community lifestyle reports, com 01 on page 197 with a recommendation on 197, tab 9, do I have anyone to move that?
I'll move that, but I want to point out a couple of things that is inconsistent.
So moved by Councillor Rhodes, seconded by Councillor Harle, okay, some discussion?
Yeah, look, the graphs clearly show that we do have a drug problem. Yeah, look, the graphs clearly show that we do have a drug problem. And this is not consistent with what we are being told in our safety committee meetings. We're always being told, we, it's only a perception. We have a perception of safety and drugs, but in actual fact, we don't have a drug problem. Whereas clearly, when you look at the graphs, you can see that we do actually have a drug problem. And, you know, some of the initiatives that we've taken, like reducing the opening hour of some of the public amenities, that's not exactly attacking the drug problem, it's just something that we've got to do because we do have a drug problem. So the use of CCTV to increase security. The question here, and I've asked it at the safety committee, has the Liverpool Police ever asked for the CCTV footage related to any drug offence? So if we could have that answered, that might shed more light on it.
So you're asking though whether the police have asked for the CCTV?
Absolutely. We're saying it's one of our preventative methods and I don't think it's ever used for that.
Thank you. Through the chair, the Liverpool Police have a direct feed of all the CCTV in the CBD. We're actually going to duplicate that feed into what was the, into our control room at Moore Street for the next two years where we've got all our CCTV cameras aggregated, looking at not only the CBD but illegal dumping cameras. And council will also remember that a position of a security officer was resolved the two meetings ago. The PED for that position is up and running, so we're looking at enhancing our capability in that field.
And once again, the police conduct safety audits at key locations where known issues exist and to identify locations where police tasking should be increased to address the AOD issues. Has this ever shown a reduction? Is there some sort of measurement that the work that we are doing or that the police are doing is having an effect on the numbers? It's not ever shown or doesn't show us necessarily that what we are doing is having any effect. And the other one, providing funding through the grants and donations, sorry, this is the last one. Who have we supported? And do we have a report on return for investment when we do support these things? What I'm looking for is some sort of indication that through all the things that we are doing, do we ever actually ever measure whether it's working? And so...
So that's not indicated by the statistics and the drop of use that came at the start of that report?
The drop of use.
That's, you're after more detail than that? So I'll get to you in one sec councillor Green.
Yeah, more detail. I think that we need more detail in order for us to truly address this as a problem because we get a great deal of reports from the community that there is a problem. We're told at the safety committee it's a perceived problem, but that's not the way the public see it. And these people are in the streets, from shop owners and various places, and they're the people who are reporting that, you know, we do have a problem. So I'm just not happy with the feedback that we've been given here and that, so I'm happy with the motion, but I think that we need to do more work in this particular area.
Through the CEO.
Thank you. The Bureau of Crime Statistics or the BOSSCAR statistics are the fundamental benchmark for drug crime. We're not the lead agency, of course, the New South Wales Police are. And the statistics derived in this report are seeing reductions between over a four-year period, bringing Liverpool closer to the state average. The challenge will be, we don't have any other data other than the empirical data that the police use. So I'm kind of at a loss of how council can support additional data. And any discussion on return on investment is valid to the extent that it should be reflected in the downturn of statistics which it is in this report.
It's disappointing that we're bringing it down, but we're still leading the western suburbs. You know, we still are the highest drug affected city in the western Sydney, in western Sydney or at least south west Sydney. And, you know, to me, yes, you brought the point. That's not.
Councillor Green?
I'm wondering, given alcohol and drug problems are complex, excuse me, I'm wondering if a question could be, or we could write to South West Sydney Local Health District to find out what is the funding for drug and alcohol services within the Liverpool area? Particularly, I guess, like whether they be outreach services would be included in that as well as, you know, like counselling, whatever. But, you know, we might be looking at a problem where there aren't a lot of resources and the funding body may not, I don't know.
No, I think that's a great question.
Good to start there, rather. We look to police, but if we're talking about prevention and support, then that would come through.
And this is a multi-organisational issue at multi-level of government. So I think that's a great question that we can, we can take on notice and write to get that information.
That council receive a note this report. Two, the council notes the evidence that the Liverpool LGA has the highest number of drug-related offences in south west Sydney. And three, that we do...
Council write to South West Sydney Local Health District and ask that the level of funding on alcohol and other drug programmes, including community support based.
Can I just point out that I think that this report mentions the neighbouring councils? I'm not sure that the region of south west Sydney is an accurate reflection of what we've got in the report.
Okay, well, let's say within our region.
South West Sydney Local Health... South West Sydney Local Health District will have, they'll know by the funding of what's coming into Liverpool.
Okay, cool. I'm just, just looking at the motion though that says notes evidence that Liverpool has the highest evidence in south west Sydney.
So if I said, make that...
In the area mentioned in the previous report, maybe we could write? Just wait for that to be finished. Discuss potential strategies to improve? To improve these statistics, bless you. Drug summit with relevant stakeholders or am I over-complicating it? Can we just add into point four, consider having a drug summit with relevant stakeholders, please? All right, any more discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against? Declare it unanimous.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Next item is com 02, Grants and Donations and Community Sponsorship Report, page 204, tab 10 with a recommendation on page 200 and 4.
Happy to move that way.
Moved councillor Rhodes, seconded councillor Calienda. Any discussion? Councillor Harrow? Councillor Rhodes, can you turn off your mic, please?
Yes, on page 211, there is a table showing the balances in each of those categories. And I note that in red, I assume is overspent or there's no money there, but overall, there is money there. What I'm suggesting, maybe we need to look at the overall allocation of funds to those See, we've got community sponsorship is $29,000 overdrawn.
Yep. So I think, so do you want to...
Maybe we need to look at...
Maybe a report for how can we allocate the whole budget?
Yeah, juggle it. Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, I guess the, I think from what, if we can see how the staff have dealt with it and it's good that they're, they're, they're working this, even though that element is overdrawn, I think knowing where we are in the financial year, they're saying, well, we can still fund from that total pool. Do you really want to change it around and make each pool bigger or?
No, 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 I don't want to make it bigger. I'm just...
Not the pool bigger, but more for different categories?
Just maybe reallocate the balance a bit.
If we could get a report over the last few years, if we could get a report over the last few years of what categories were overran and what categories were undercooked, and then we might be able to just juggle it a bit better. I mean, I know we're coping now, but let's do a little review and then if we can allocate more appropriately, we can.
So let, so do what councillor Green recommended and we'll just have it as a discussion item in the governance committee. All right, wonderful. All right, feel free if you want to add that as a point, if it needs to be, or if the staff can just take it on board. I think, right? Right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Next item is investment report, page 213. Moved councillor Green, seconded councillor Hadid. Any discussion? Put the motion. All those in favour? Against, declare carried. And sorry, that was 213, recommendation on 214. City Futures Report, CFD 01, Austro Park Master Plans, Craig Park and Skom Memorial Park, page 221, tab 12, recommendation on page 222. Councillor Harrow? You're going to move it or you're going to...
I'll do both. I'm sorry, I was going to defer on the basis of the speaker that was going to speak on this issue.
Yeah. Now, this is going on public exhibition or, huh?
Oh, that's a problem. What's happening is the speaker was going to speak on behalf of the Little Athletics at Austro. And he claims that the proposal to the park doesn't fit in with what the Little Athletics want. There are issues there that evidently he tried to raise and they were not, not addressed as far as he's concerned. So that's why I'm suggesting maybe we need to look at it.
Well, yeah, if it goes on public exhibition, I think he can raise these issues through that.
So, can I, if let's add a point five to that, that council organise a meeting with Little Athletics with, invite all councillors who want to be involved and relevant staff as a point five. Yep, so councillor Harrow, seconded councillor Amun. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, declare carried. And thank you for staff for moving on this. We are extremely excited that the plans are moving in Austro at a very good pace. Thank you. So, next item is operation reports, op, op, 01. It's not from a copper, is it? Conseil Recreation Precinct Stage 2, amended sports field master plan, page 241, tab 13, recommendation on page 241. Move councillor Hadid, seconded councillor Rhodes.
Yeah, I was going to move it.
Seconded councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? As you say, looking forward to kicking off on another synthetic. How good is it that we, one synthetic field has been opened and we're getting ready for our next ones? So yes, we look forward to it. So once again, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Against, I declare it carried. Committee reports?
Move as a whole, please.
Move councillor Hadid as a whole, seconded councillor Green. Yep. Which one?
Not pull out, just CT 04, just a question.
Yep.
We, at the last council meeting, we passed a resolution to have Grove Street closure looked at, and this is being addressed in here, but the information in here is in fact incorrect.
Incorrect.
It's incorrect. It's saying that they should, you know, go ahead and do further studies, further, we don't want any of that. We want it to, and councillor, you raised the issue, so it should go ahead through the CEO.
I've just had an update from Charles. It's actually coming back to us on the 29th, the next council meeting, and then they'll move on it from then. It's all been sorted.
So we had the meeting and councillors could have come along to it. We had the meeting and now that report could be coming back to council. There was an extraordinary meeting.
African Committee to be held to address it, and that was held, and now that report has to come back to council.
Great.
Just don't do it again.
You're right. So move that, we move everything as a whole. All those in favour? Against? Declare it unanimous. Questions with notice, councillor Harrow, QWN 01, page 321.
Yes, are there any, yeah, that's happening. I understand that. I'm happy with that.
Good, wonderful. QWN 02, councillor Harrow.
Sorry, I'm happy with that too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Page 324.
Can you turn yours off?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thanks staff for the answer to the question. I just would like a little bit more detail. I think it's been interpreted maybe a little bit not as I had intended. What I'm talking about, and I understand the road is particularly bad where that new roundabout is, and thank you because I can note that one of the sides has been filled today, so that was excellent. The middle of the road is awful, as is detailed in here. But what I was referring to is between the bridge at least, that the M5 crosses down towards Heathcote Road, all the way up to Brickmakers Drive was redone a matter of a couple of years ago, if it was a couple of years ago, and I don't remember exactly when it was. The general condition of that road is not, not acceptable in that it was only done a couple of years ago. And I'm asking whether or not there is still recourse for council to look at who did that work for us and whether or not there's some kind of, they can come back to that. I'm happy if you have to take it on notice as well, I don't expect an answer today.
I disrupted him, sorry. No, I might not need to take it on notice, I'll just refer to the manager, Project Delivery, who's got some detail about that.
Through the CEO, thank you councillor for your question. So I think I have a better understanding of what you, the question you had in mind. So the works that you're referring to are undertaken in 2021 as part of a programme to reconstruct the pavement there. So what happened was the works were undertaken through a design and construct contract with a contractor, which council approved after the design was completed. And the works were undertaken to that specification, which council approved as well. Unfortunately... Unfortunately, as you might recall, there was a quite heavy period of rainfall, just basically on the back of that part of that work. And that's, I guess, in, so in technical terms, it's saturated the subgrade there, which is meant, which is more or less rendered the work that was undertaken there ineffective in the longer term, unfortunately, it takes quite heavy traffic. So council acknowledged that in terms of getting the contractor back to redo that work, we don't have any recourse. We've actually already had that discussion with the contractor. But because the design and investigation was undertaken at the time, based on the knowledge that they had at the time, before the heavy rains and the storms and the flooding, and council approved that design and that work, there is no recourse to redo that work. We acknowledge that the pavement and the subgrade there are terrible. In technical terms, we in the industry call the subgrade their soup. So it's not a very good structural material. So we already, as in the response, we have investigations and designs underway to fully reconstruct the road to be fit for purpose in the event of heavy rainfall in the future. So that's coming down the pipeline.
Thank you very much.
Next one, QW N zero four, page three twenty six, councillor Green.
Staff, for that report, I'm pleased to read that there is a programme underway to improve and boost traineeships and cadetships and apprentices in the organisation. I don't know whether to move or to ask in terms of with apprentices, making sure that, or we have a commitment that council's apprentices are linked into TAFE. So could I propose that as a motion, please?
Are you saying, are you saying only use TAFE?
Pardon?
Are you saying only use TAFE?
Oh, I think TAFE, when we've got wonderful trades TAFE at Miller. And by, in the TAFE system, I think, I think it shows that there's far better support. And in terms of their output, so it's a way for council to not only support apprenticeships that we put on, but we also supporting TAFE by recommending that, of a committee, that trades, trades apprentices that are, that are taken on by council are also attached to the TAFE system.
Can, can I just comment on that for a moment, please, councillor? So I used to be the CEO of a registered training organisation, of which TAFE is. So I think we should have been, there is a lot of things that TAFE does very, 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 very good. And also probably the reality, probably the overall. But there are some things that private RTOs do very, very good, right? Some, probably most don't, but there are some that are really, really good. So I think we just, I don't know how this goes from a competition point of view.
Yeah, just two, two quick comments. All, all three of our horticultural apprentices are going through Miller TAFE, that's the first thing. There, there's just some challenges because of competition in relation to how we procure things for council and to what extent we could say we're only going through TAFE, that's the challenge.
So would, yeah, would it be worth getting that report back to council? So we know that what skills that we're engaged with through TAFE to provide services, horticulture is one. Is there more that, that council engages with different tapes? Because I know that we used to do it along, you know, eight years ago, or thereabouts.
All right, cool. So let's see, we've, we've got. Do you have a second or free motion? That council prefers TAFE. Yep.
I think we already do.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor?
I take on board the comments by councillor Green that TAFE is an amazing training organisation. But I'm not sure that we can discriminate between training organisations in a policy here like this, as long as, pardon?
Oh, sorry, Mr TAFE.
I know, I know. And, and I recognise that, but the, the problem I have with the motion is that I don't know that we can discriminate between training courses that are registered training courses. As long as everything's registered, I'm, I'm not sure that we could do that.
Technically, it's a procurement issue as well.
Thank you, I agree. I think if the wording said attached to an RTO, we could have a look at that and what, what the, what the width of our exposure is to TAFE and other RTOs working with in the LGA.
You can acknowledge the wonderful work of TAFE, that TAFE does, if you want, as another point.
Add a point to it, with the councillor's permission, that we get a report back on what engagements that we do have with TAFE and other service providers. And then we have a discussion about it. So a report back and let's see what we're doing and who we're doing.
If, if you really want to, yeah, and I think, are you happy with that councillor Green? If that can, because the thing, the reality is, you know, we have, and we've, we've discussed a lot about the organisation today. The question is, what is the right amount of traineeships and apprenticeships that we should have as an overall number? And once again, someone who spent years of their life promoting people to take traineeships, I definitely think, I don't know what the number is. But it'd be good to maybe benchmark that and then we can say, well, how do we get more trainees?
We can do that because I think it's important that we invest in our young people.
Indeed. I know childcare has many, many wonderful trainees, so I'm sure we can do that. So I think we can capture that. Maybe once again, we can just, let's discuss that in the governance meeting. Councillor Hall?
That's it. You know, as you said, Mr TAFE, I would suggest that in trades areas, which are, we, we have major problems with, not just with council, but everybody has major problems with getting the basic trades. You know, electricians, plumbers, those issues. And I think we probably have trouble getting people in that area as well. And the thing is, we probably employ those sorts of tradespeople that could be used to train apprentices. You know, you can't have an apprentice if you haven't got a tradesperson in that particular area. And I, this is actually a notice of motion that was approved back in two thousand and eight, do you remember? I, I actually put the notice up in two thousand and eight and we did say that we wanted apprentices. And there was a report and, and we did in fact employ apprentices at the time, including traineeships. But I suggested at the time, there's a hundred and fifty odd councils in, in New South Wales. And if they all employed apprentices in the trades areas, where we currently have about 200,000 tradespeople short. That would have helped that situation. And I think councils had an obligation to, to assist.
That's all. Mindful of time. Can we add a point three? Discuss this at the governance committee meeting?
Yep.
Great. Move a second, happy with that. Wonderful. I'll put the motion, all those in favour.
Just say, direct the acting CEO that a report come back to council on other service providers that are engaged with council.
Yep, cool. Move, move a second, happy? Yep, good. All right, no worries. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Nom one, honour boards, page three twenty nine, recommendation on page three nine. Move councillor Hall, seconded, councillor Moon, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Nom two, page three thirty one, tab, move councillor Hall, is that your motion? Mic, please. Councillor Rhodes, can you please?
Now it is. Section two B, you need to decide. Install a photo displaying blah, 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 and A with the names of each count, not a problem. But section B, you may not want that. And I, on second thoughts, in years gone by, we used to have the town clerk, and you know, that's a long time ago. So maybe that has no longer been followed. So I would say scrap.
Can I recommend, because I know in moving into civic place, that the manager of executive, civic and executive services has a lot of ideas of what she would like to do in that whole hallway. And I believe there should be, has real opportunity to be a lot of civic stuff in there because we don't have much place. You know, displaying the robes, the chains, the mayor and deputy mayor putting up all the photos. There's a lot of historical stuff that is non existent that we can get out there. Can we recommend, as opposed to making it too specific to allow her to come back to us and present? And once again, it's probably something we discuss in detail at a governance committee meeting.
Happy with that. My only concern about all of this, and this is what Colin Harrington was going to speak about as an ex councillor, an ex mayor. He suggested that if we put it on, and the suggestion is to put it on the eleventh floor, wherever the councillors room are, that's not really meeting the needs of the community. Because nobody is going to see them there except councillors, and I think that's a bit unfair. So it ought to be in a place where it's on public display and people can see it. Maybe we need to put it in the foyer of the library, and if you don't want to do it downstairs, but let's discuss it.
Let's discuss it, done. Yeah, so can we just put in there, discuss it and have the matter resolved within two months?
Lovely.
All right. So, yep, so can we? Can that be reflected? I'm just trying to read that. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Oh, sorry. Seconded councillor. Councillor Hadid did. Okay. All those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Nom three, page three, three, three.
Move. It's me, yep, it's me.
Yep, seconded, councillor Moon, discussion?
Look, just in terms of this, I wanna just make a quick amendment to the, or an update on the CEO comment. I take the, I, I take on board the comments around the sort of update of the partnership. But my information is that without the, the cash contribution, then the project will not be going, will not be able to go ahead because the ARC requirement is that the partner organisations meet a certain threshold.
Hello?
Hello. Thank you. Look, as long as you don't say namaste, we're good. So, yeah, my understanding is that the, without the, the cash contribution, the, the, the sort of, it doesn't meet the ARC contribution requirements and therefore the whole project will not be able to go ahead. Given, you know, the, the recent media around firstly UNSW coming to Liverpool, us establishing ourselves as a university town and the importance of this research in terms of, you know, a, a huge need of migrant and refugee women and their employment, for all of those reasons, and the fact that it's $5,000 a year over three years. I think it's a fitting, you know, a fitting investment of council resources. And it, it literally means that this research won't go ahead if we don't support this.
Thank you. All right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous.
Can I just make sure that the motion includes the funding, the cash funding requirement?
Did you put the number? How much? No, but it's gotta be part of the motion. It's, it's part of the recommend. One, two, so you want to move a point three?
Just maybe reword number one, to say reinstate the support for the ARC project, including the, the, yeah, the financial commitment.
Okay, cool. Seconded, happy with that? Great. All those in favour, against, declare it unanimous. Okay, COM zero one, page one, six, five, six. Happy to, seconded councillor Hall. Does anyone have any issues? The confidential booklet, so they want councillor Hall, councillor Hadid and Hall have recommended that we move all three as one confidential items. Want to discuss anything? Okay, moved, seconded, in discussion. Put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare carried. Three minutes spare. Anyone got anything else? No? All right. Thank you, everyone. Greatly appreciate your, your patience and support. And if anybody needs any support from tonight, please just reach out to myself or the acting CEO. But yeah, and we'd like to declare the meeting closed. Thank you.